Two thousand twenty-five meetings, Alaman's County Planning Board will come to order. I've got the roll up here, mister. Have you got it?
I've got it. We're missing one, but we still have a warrant to conduct business.
Yep. And you've already sworn in Mr. Squirt Jordan, our newest member. That comes from the county commissioners.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You you were introduced to them as a squirt.
A square.
Yeah. She said, I've known him since he was a squirt. That was exactly who it was.
Remember her too.
Yeah. She was a squirt years ago, wasn't she? And a mess on top of that. So I told her, I said, well, I'll be sure that everybody knows that he's a squirt. All right. So do you want to introduce yourself, or do you want me to do it?
You already did. My name's Mac. I go by Mac. Nice work. There's nothing worse. I'm very honored to be part of this and looking forward to working with this team. It's amazing group.
Do you want to just kind of go around the horn and introduce ourselves?
Peter Chandler.
Yep, I met you earlier.
I'm Tom King.
Smoke.
Henry Vines.
Tom Rodney Cheek.
Yeah.
Lee Oslin.
Amy Perkins.
And Matthew Hoagland is the planning director.
Was that yesterday or two days ago?
Two days, two days ago.
The leak.
Ian Shannon over here in the corner, who's actually the most tenured member of the planning department. He's been here the longest.
Is our planner too?
Okay. Assistant County Attorney.
Sheriff Horn.
Yep. County Manager.
We know each other.
Yeah, okay.
Don't want any more information.
All is fall.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, there's that. Did anybody sign us public comments?
They did not.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody want to say anything? This is that time. Okay. All right. We're just going to move over responses. Old business.
We approved, did you approve the minutes?
You know what?
Mr. Chair, I had some about the minutes, I have some corrections.
Yeah. Well, now's the time, because we're going to talk about it.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just noticed on the draft, it says agenda, so that say minutes under the Alaman's County Planning Board. And you can call me Tom, not Richard. Uh, under the staff president, uh, I think Rick was here last time, but I don't remember missing one or maybe missing some people. Maybe I didn't see them off snow around lately.
Oh, Rick was here and.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, on what would be case three, uh, in the first paragraph, it says, uh, in the first sentence, sophisticated inventory storage. I can't remember what the terminology was, but that sounded weird. Uh, in the second paragraph, Nightingale, I shouldn't say this, Mike Nightdale. I mean, it happens. I've done it before, so the brain does weird things. There are a few other typos that there were said. Those were kind of the main things, um, that I saw. Uh, oh, under adjournment, if if your first commissioner Anthony Brown, I think that was supposed to be Anthony here.
Yeah, that was corrected in the, um, packet that I re-sent out on Tuesday.
That's all.
Well, I picked up on some of that, but not all of it, so. You've got a tighter sieve than your funnel and I've got.
Motion to approve the, uh, minutes with the corrections.
Got a motion needs second?
Second.
A motion to second and discussion about the minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now, what was your question about the minutes? Yes, sir. They've been approved. Adjusted and approved. Now for the old business. Draft land use districts and map review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh huh.
Uh, so we've got some new members, and it's always good to do a refresher. So before we do, yeah, I just want to go over a couple of things, if that's all right. For the new members and just give their context here for everybody who's involved. Um, couple items. So those two items are how we got here and the goal of what we're working on. So for starters, we are currently working on this land use map and the table of uses also in your packet and other related documents at the direction of the county commissioners. Following debate throughout twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, the planning board recommended a to a minimum lot size to the commissioners in the summer of twenty twenty-four. That proposal was not accepted. However, in September of twenty twenty-four, the commissioners instructed staff and the planning board to take a deeper look at more comprehensive land use regulations, lot size issues, subdivision changes, and more. That process has brought us to the current point in crafting the draft map before you tonight, the table of uses and the other related documents, as I mentioned, which will come in the near future. That brings me to item number two, which is the goal of what we're working. As I mentioned in our last couple of meetings and the presentation that I gave, I think in November. The goal of this map and these plans is to create something that's the text where people already love about Alaman's County. And something that is in harmony with existing land use. This map is designed to be the opposite of what you might call old fashioned zoning, which often creates complex rules and abrupt land use changes or abrupt changes in land use. Instead, this map aims to preserve natural and rural areas to encourage future development without current development and provide flexibility in rules that would be easy to understand and to administer. So at the last meeting, we took some time to go over the map and discuss the proposal. Your homework assignment, for lack of a better term, was then to take the map home, make your own notes, propose changes, and or formulate additional questions. At this point, everything is still on the table. Uh, tonight, we can take your recommendations and, uh, use those to refine the map further and ideally make it even better. Um, any questions before we get into anything or anything you might want to add? And I don't have any specific idea on how we go through this, maybe district by district in terms of the land use districts, but I just wanted to put that out before we got into our discussion.
Well, thank you for the clarification. Does does anybody have any questions of Matthew at this point? Well, hearing none. Do you want to talk about the map? Or do you want to talk about the the list of of acceptable permitted uses and what all?
Well, that's coming next. So if you look under new business, that's kind of a new item that we'll get into.
All right, well.
So my thought was to dig into the map.
Go ahead with the mapping.
Like I said, I'm not married to any kind of format, so it might be, you know, kind of how you want to take it. Um, the only thing.
Well, in that case.
Yep.
Has everybody except Mac, and I'm guessing you've not made notes on your maps?
Well, sure to.
Okay, all right. Has everybody made some notes on their map? Okay. Well, you want to just start and work your way around and.
Yeah, and I'll just add too. So the only difference in the map that was included in your agenda packet was it's an overlay. It's the exact same map in terms of the districts. It's just an overlay of the farm type properties as well. The president used to value the voluntary ag districts and the permanently preserved. That was a big point of our discussion at the last, uh, meeting. So that's simply an overlay. That doesn't necessarily change anything about the districts, but it's really just for context.
Okay, we'll just start right there with King and come around. Go from there. If you want me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I guess, uh, some I made some notes on my map and I'll I'll let you have this. It's not totally complete. Some thoughts I had were some of the rural centers are seem to be just a little misplugged. Um, and I'm wondering. Like Clover Garden is kind of small, but McCray is extremely large.
Maybe.
Um, Pleasant Grove is kind of a large area. And was it better to maybe tighten those up a little bit, um, maybe a quarter mile or a half mile? Like McCray has, I think, one business use there and a and a ball field. And it's a big, it's the one, Pleasant Grove, which has a, uh, direct center out there, most of them. Holding gas station. It's like a whole process.
Do you want to take a leave of that? One thing I'll say is that, um, we were pretty, uh, happy about not saying policies. So even if it's a rural intersection and one of the properties. We were pretty, pretty kind of intent on keeping that total. Even the whole time that you pause in. They're not splitting the that specific property into two different classifications. So that like the back.
You know, the only other reason is free. We know growth is coming to these areas. For kind of the initial round of growth, I mean, over time, I see those rural centers slightly a little bit. Um, I think so, but in the meantime, giving it a little bit of room for alternatives and growth here that clearly wants you to put in. So there's some options, but I locked in. It's not a fresh, I'm not for this. I noticed one was walking. Didn't it current one nineteen and forty-nine? Um, I don't know if that was purposeful or not. Um, um, the north of that going at one nineteen, uh, forecast.
Okay. Yeah, that's. Okay. I definitely. Those are too many highways. Yeah. The corner store is not operational, but there's a repair, the repair shop right there.
Also, I was I was kind of thinking like suburban transition areas, uh, the mill villages around the ETJs. Um, I guess the thought was that, you know, these may kind of grow into the suburban transition areas, but maybe also kind of pick up into like the Carolina area to pick up those. And and I guess that, you know, we're all speculating.
Sure.
Uh, what green level or rolling to maybe.
Yeah.
That's why we're.
No, I think that's an excellent point. As a matter of fact, the primary, if I remember correctly, the primary old mill there is in Burlington, CTJ. But the surrounding.
The residential.
Yellow district that we have would uh, would correspond to the the aesthetic value of that mill. So I don't know if we have a, uh, a good way of stopping them from growing or extending their ETJ. But if it's, you know, basically if it's under our jurisdiction, we could hold on.
Uh, I guess the last thing, I I didn't believe or anything, but I was just thinking that maybe using, uh, roads as like boundary lines for the land use districts might be best rather than having like in some areas you have to like one property. I think we noted that the last meeting was this property across the street rural residential and not agricultural. Using a a street as a as a dividing line between the district might might be a a better way to do it, or or a river or some physical boundary.
I know this in all cases, but that's weird.
Because property lines will change too. So
Yeah.
Gee, we may have a property that's divided and it gets split in a way where it's if there's a split voting district or land is listed.
Sure.
That's it, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, now, in addition to what Tom said, um, some of them were easy to do. McCray really stuck out. And also Pleasant Grove, I didn't go after Pleasant Grove to call Steve Dux. As he said, but McCray is way too big. In in the end, which you've got encircled in orange with McCray, uh, there's five farms in that some pretty sad. So that has got to be reduced greatly. Now, I've got them marked here, Matthew. I'll give you my, I'll give you my list. But this is just an example of kind of, it's it's way out of whack. It's not even close to being accurate how it's marked up now. Um, it's just, uh, it's grossly o- over too large. I think Pleasant Grove is the same thing, but I'm not going to speak to that. Call Steve, so. Pass that down to Matthew. He will have that. I forgot.
Is that it? Did you have other?
No, there was a mill village in there that, uh, I don't think had the right color, but I marked it on there as well.
Okay.
The Blinco, uh, store area, I've got it marked on there as well. So, uh, you know, I don't know what, uh, what draws the attention to some of these intersections and not others. I don't, I don't know what the criteria is. Brian, where you, uh, you think for, for instance, Union Ridge Road, the intersection there, Union Ridge and, uh, Alton Hall, Union Ridge Road, but the churches own that, uh, churches own all that property right there. Maybe that's the reason they didn't get put in there, and it shouldn't be in there. I just didn't know what the criteria was to blow up some intersections and not other.
Um, yeah, there's not science. It's.
Okay, so that's fine. You don't need to say anymore. Yeah. So I'm going to just stick with what I gave Matthew. This got to be correct.
So I think one thing that would be helpful, I I think all of these suggestions you guys are going to give are probably ones that we would want to look at, but um, as we get these individual maps in and Matthew's making changes later, he's going to not be able to know if there was an objection to the map. So I think we need to just kind of say we probably need to incorporate these changes unless we hear from some of the others of you that you disagree at the, you know, as we're talking about it, so we can make notes about what to change. You guys can give your general sense or the section time we go through, that will help us incorporate those in. Well, and and let me say at this point that this is a working process. We we got the map last month. We made some notes. We get revised, we'll pass them out. This this may occur a couple of times before we send 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 it to the commissioners and say this is our recommendation. And 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 that's the reason for doing this. So that when the commissioners get it, they got a good feeling that a lot of time and effort was spent on it, and this wasn't just, okay, that here's what we got.
I do like the process.
Yeah.
And well, my time will look at it.
Okay. You up?
Me? I need to stay for now. Can't hardly read it, but I'm staying there. Yeah, I'm.
You can come over here and stand with me and Henry. We've got a.
Well, it's it's going to take me more than a couple of days before I can start getting on here and my thoughts, uh, but I'm I'm counting a lot of So, yeah, some of the districts look way too big, and then I think if the the goal is to preserve crossroads and designate those as, uh, rural community economic zones, then you look look at other crossroads that already have some commercial, whether it's just one store or whatever, and not the, and and have it a little more what's on the ground. And kind of add some smaller places and reduce some of the like McCray's. And especially you don't want to if we're wanting to preserve farmland, you don't want to take away farms and or around McCray to create an economic dump. That's, so I'm I'm looking forward to.
And to piggyback on that, that's, you know, if you kind of start small, that doesn't mean you can't grow.
Correct.
Um, so it it's kind of like we're starting small. And a- as as things come to us, it can grow.
Mr. Chairman, I want to just one other thing. When I was going through these properties and looking at, looking at it, and maybe some other people found the same thing, so I'm just going to say this. I found about a dozen properties that were not taxed. So I called the tax department, and they they some, I'm just saying this because some of you may have seen the same thing. They're in the process of being assessed to be taxed. So it's not, they're not going to be missed. So I was, I was excited when I saw that. People, people aren't paying their taxes, but they will be assessed. They promised me that.
You know, I also like the idea of using physical boundaries and roads to delineate and try as best we can to not have split zone on properties. I would not want that on mine.
Right, right. Yeah, I think split. Splitting a property would really be a headache for the property owner, and I've seen cases where if there is ambiguity, then the burden is on the local government to hire surveyors to go out and say specifically where the line is.
Yeah.
And I don't think we want to put that burden on our ceiling. So to me, it's always easier. It's kind of like voting precincts, you know, it's always easier just to go down a road, down a property line, that type of thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In Florida, what do you mean not taxed?
Uh, when I was going through the the properties, it it came up only, it came up nothing. There's no, no owner, no nothing. And so it was like it was just like it was missed or forgotten. But what was going on, properties that I was like, that I ran across is they were being, uh, either purchased or the the land use was being changed from vacant land to a possible possible house being built or not being built yet.
So it had been taxed.
It had been taxed. It had been taxed. It's going, it's going through a change. And and I was assured that it will be taxed. So we're about it.
Thank you.
And thank you for asking that question. Keep me from having to do it.
I found a dozen properties right at eleven foot.
Uh huh. Okay.
Uh, regarding the split, property being split zone, most, most board members will turn that over to the first, uh, instance, if the staff makes the interpretation based on the map, based on the the measurements on the map. Uh, and then the second, there's a disagreement that the board of adjustment would hear an appeal of the staff's decision. Um, I don't know whether you would have to physically have a surveyor do it, but that would be one way of presenting evidence.
But if an entire parcel was classified a certain way and, uh, line crossed in there somewhere, you'd think staff would be able to say, okay, well, it all goes this way.
You you.
Or it all goes that.
And it's a hundred feet, two hundred feet. The other thing is you might wind up with a, uh, forty acre parcel zone or let's say rural community, and that allows some type of commercial abuse, since it could just kind of dwarf everything else around it on that. That's all theory. Amy.
Um, I don't know that I have much more than what these gentlemen have already brought up. Other than I questioned some of these areas that are rural residential that are already probably more than known suburban transition, especially outside of the Meven area. Um, that are a little bit more smaller and I'm assuming when we get to this, that part of that is going to be lot size and stuff like that. Those are already in areas that probably border to a smaller um, lot size area and and the area out near the airport going out the Alaman's way. I noticed that you have transitions and a lot of leaves that go from the suburban transition then to the rural, but in some areas particularly around the Meven, it's just rural residential. I'm just wondering if there doesn't need to be some of that that's not adjusted more to suburban.
Well, I think part of that is is capturing what's there now. So there is a lot size component, but there's also a use component. So suburban transition is allowing more commercial uses. And if it's already, I'm looking at that area around the lake up in North Meven, is that kind of where you're looking at? It's all residential. And so to make that into something else would be changing those uses there, which is not something we can't do. It's just not what we're kind of going for, you know?
Was this map generated more from this group or from Mr. Baker or who really was the originator of this?
The genesis is the land development plan that was adopted in twenty twenty. That's going to start it. It is a modified version of that. So we kind of came up with this as staff and asked, asked for this board to, that's kind of how we started. Somebody's got to draw the line, so we said we'll do that as staff and let them tear it apart, which is the process we're in right now.
I just want to do a huge complaint.
Well, you could blame me before this meeting, but after this meeting, it's going to be their fault. So I want to make sure I'm capturing your comment accurately. You envision more right outside of the cities and ETJs, more suburban transition areas before you get to the rural residential.
Yeah, I'm just asking from a from a planning.
Ms. Perkins, are you talking about the northern area, like the lake?
I I'm talking about some of that area and some of this going out sixty-two. I'm not sure where some of those old plants are out sixty-two.
Um. Yeah, outside of the Meven area, a lot of that's, I think, the watershed critical area.
Yeah.
So you're not going to get uh, things that too agricultural, but I guess.
But there's some of this out near Battlefield that's not residential.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what you call that. But there is some commercial stuff that's out there. There's car lots and churches and plants and things like that.
Yeah.
But it is what it is.
Lee.
Okay, next. Um, I don't know that I necessarily have any any changes to the map. I do like physical boundaries that was that was suggested because I'm looking at at just a certain road here near my house, and there's probably seventy-five percent of lots on one side of the road are rural residential, and then three or four of them are agricultural. I think my main concern is going to come into what actually this means the property owners inside of the rural residential and agricultural districts. What how would affect, is that color going to be on them as far as what they're able to do with their property from a development standpoint? I think my question would be more related to that when we get to that point. So as far as change to the map right now, I don't have any changes on mine.
Okay.
You're up.
All right. I'm on Southern Niggas. And and we're going to travel down, we're going to travel down forty-nines out of Belmont here. Uh, we've got a lot of farms that are in this, uh, residential blue, big farms. Uh, and I don't know, I understand right here. It looks like that to me that we draw that line a little bit far out away from forty-nine. If you come down through forty-nine and all these developments and everything are real close, you could draw that line down through there. But then when you get down to Patterson Mill Road, these are, these are, uh, eighty and a hundred acre fields right here. This that's in uh, residential use, which I know they're in full farm use. I don't know how we determine and separate these out. Like you said, without, you know, you got this section and that section. I understand what you're looking at here is you're wanting this like to be. I understand what you're looking at here is you're wanting this like to be. Able to be developed, then you come on down here. To me, on Isley Drive. Part of my farms in residential and part of my farms in in uh. Uh. Rural residential. And they're across the road, on a private road, not even a state road. So, and then you come down, right down there in all these developments, you see all these small lots in here, you can understand why that would stay in in that, in that zone. But all these, these large, and you come on down by Bishop Road. Which uh. Part of this right here. Is not showing, uh, that's note is there's a. What do you call it, uh campground right here. And that's not, that's not showing on here. Rural uh. Rural time, what's this, old time.
Several times.
Old time, yeah, several times. Right there at Bishop Road. And I I mean, I don't know how you break down this thing off of this, those. You know, you just got the main roads here and it's hard to. But if you come on down here on forty-nine. There's. A lot of large farms all the way down through here that's in that. Residential area. And uh, I understand.
So what district classification this simple times in?
It's in the blues.
Again, the rural residential.
Yeah, if you, if you look right there at Bishop, where it says Bishop Road. You see Bishop Road, uh Bishop Road runs behind it and comes back out. On to Friendship Rock Creek Road. And that, and that's. That rural time, I think they said that square right there, right below Bishop, where it says Bishop Road.
Yeah.
That that square right there. Cause that's about twenty-five or thirty acres right there, I think that, yeah, that rural time, I'm pretty sure it's right there. Gone a road, yeah, that's gone, Patterson comes in here.
But you're, you're recommending maybe making that green. Uh, a lot bigger down in that corner of the county.
I kind of, I kind of like that idea, but I mean, I understand what their. What their folks are knowing, down here in this bottom, I ain't gotten down there to the bottom yet.
Yeah, why is this, why, I'm sorry, why, why is there so much blue down in the?
Because of. Because of the Toyota plant. I think, I think that's what was. Brian, you tell me if I'm wrong, but.
You're not wrong.
That's what the, that's what the consensus was, but I'm telling you that. That I know these people in this. All the way down to Henshaw. Shop Road, this big lot right here. Now, they might want to develop it, but that, that's two hundred and some acres right there that I know was my wife's cousin's land that they just sold. Uh. About two years ago, and it's all in. Forestry right now.
So that corner of the county is a place where we deviated from our goal of capturing the current use.
Right.
Right, the current use there is clearly more agricultural. Than is rural residential, I think we are anticipating a significant growth pressure from that Toyota plant.
That's right.
And they gotta go somewhere. Uh, and so let's pick somewhere for them to go, so that they don't go, you know.
And they gonna start in Randolph Canyon, come into Snow Camp, come up forty-nine.
That's right.
But.
And and that's what he said when they made their first presentation of this, was if that. I'm gonna use the term.
Well, that's, that's what I told him when we started, I said, what's all this about this cow tail? Yeah, and he said, what do you mean the cow, I goes, that's a cow tail, comes down the tail, comes down here, and then the swish gets down and spreads out. It's a cow tail.
And of course, nobody's saying they can't farm there, you know.
Right.
That's my question, if that's in the blue in this farm, can they not want it?
Farm there for as long as they want.
Okay.
Just mean, yeah.
Well, when the time comes.
It'll just be easier for them to do something different than farming.
The blue. Anything on here, whether it's in agricultural district or not, only pertains to future development.
Yeah. Oh God, so this just makes it easier if somebody wants to develop that.
And these.
Forty-nine corridor.
And in the blue, in the blue area, your lot size is much smaller. Than in the green area.
This is also correct.
But I guess we haven't got that lot sizes yet, is that correct?
Correct, I'll, that is hypothetically part of the plan, I think you'll, you know, wanted to flesh out those details, but yes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what. I'm looking at.
That's what I'm looking at too. From a different perspective, perhaps, the same, same, same question.
Yeah, but. Uh, and then. I don't know how we go about this, but. It's like up here, uh. Between Mount Herman. He can help me with this. The Mount Herman and the, and the Firetown Road, we got all these, this development and all this is developed right in this area, pretty strong. I mean, you can see all the little lots and everything, that should be in this blue. Instead of in agriculture.
But there's already commercial in.
Yeah, there's already.
Yeah.
In those areas.
Yeah, it's already there.
So.
And this is that, you know.
Maybe. Right, cause part of this is you think about what. Where you want to guide development over the coming decades. So, like I said a moment ago, anything, let's say this were adopted tomorrow. Average person is not even gonna know, right? Nothing about what they're doing with their property today changes, they're protected legally, there's not the forming, there's, you know, um. Uh protections and all the rest, it only pertains to future development. So it's really a matter of policy and saying, we want this area to look like, in the future, we want this area to look like X. Even if it's a farm now, or even if it's a more traditional subdivision, eventually in the future, we want it to look like that. And that's why you place a different land use classification on. Now, obviously. When you're doing that, you've got to be very careful, you've got to think about existing use, you've got to think about. Adopted plans, you've got to think about what's feasible, and you've got to think about what it. May feasibly look like in twenty, thirty or fifty years. It's a pretty complex process. But. That subdivision right there at Firetown Road. Nice little subdivision, and so, you know, it's nice.
Yeah.
I don't know that we want eight more of them right there. You know, that. We want that to encourage that use, if not. It's an existing use and it'll stay like that forever, but we're not. Making it rural residential because we don't want a bunch more development.
Is, if we were to go in and and. Put everything into the category that it already is, that is essentially spots open. From what I understand, or at least one definition of spots open.
So going back to this little area that I brought up, at the intersection of seventy and one nineteen. I would imagine would be more suited. To something other than rural residential, given what's already there. And given that it's too major. You know.
So you mean specifically like those parcels that are right on Highway seven between.
Specifically.
Between Hall River and Men.
That used to have a farmers' company there that has car lots there that isn't too far from junkyards, so got business stuff there.
Sure.
I understand the watershed stuff, but I'm talking about right there at seventy and one nineteen, you've got major. Is that not where you would prefer? Future?
I mean, I think that's a fair point there, I. There's a lot of residential homes there, they're also scattered in between junkyards, so it's a weird spot.
It is a weird spot, there's some, a small level home, parks there, there, there's a variety of. Uses that that are there.
Um, being right on the lake, I don't think we want to encourage industrial stuff, but certainly commercial, some, the type of thing that's there. I wish there weren't junkyards there being right on the lake, but that's, that's not my decision today. Uh, so yeah, I could very easily be suburban.
They're growing, they're not. Going away. They have cleaned them up. They have not spensing around in now, you can't see them.
Well, there's junk yards not in a city.
Yes, no.
Some of them are, some of them are, some of them are not. The uh, the uh Hall River ETJ goes right up to the property line if it's property they don't want yet.
I mean, that's just sort of accumulated over time.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's still, is there still an asphalt plant that works right down that area, or is that, is that still a lot of regular things?
It used to be.
It used to be, I didn't know.
Old seventy it was, neighbors cut up so much, now they just run dog trucks. All the stone building, all still there.
You done?
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, I just think that we, I would just like to say if we tighten this up a little bit tighter than what it is down here.
That will potentially be done.
But uh. We gotta, right down here in this bottom. Uh, we got a lot of businesses right in there. Right there in that Stanley Store Road and right Pleasant Hill, Liberty Road, there's, there's. Restaurants and and businesses. And Eric McPherson is right in there somewhere with his tire company.
Oh, he's.
He's over here, right here, some work things burnt out on your road.
I think that tire, Henry Henry's right down. Maybe orange section.
And burnt out to be able to, did you own that?
He's in this circle right here.
Yeah, he should, he should be right there, right there in the.
Right here, here.
Yeah, right, right around the Wolf Lane here.
He's about right there.
Yeah.
Part of what I'm hearing you say, Henry, is that maybe we need a rural center, a rural community down there, next to Liberty. I don't know, um, I mean, it's, if there's existing businesses and we want more there. And that's what that means, so.
Right, and if, if, if it wants to change. If it wants to change, then it can change. You know, they can have it changed later. But they have to stand, but you just look, you just pull right down through it and look at these. How many large tracts of land?
That's what they gonna want to buy when they come in.
Yeah.
Large tracts.
Yeah, and I think that is part of it too, is, you know, we've seen a lot of large farms bought. Or transferred and it's sub. And we gotta account for that to a degree as well.
Well, and see, that's, that's my point, is that the folks here. That don't want to see. That they want, they would like to see that when they drive down Stanley Store Road, they would like to see a five acre lot versus a two acre lot. Because they, they want to stay in the country.
But again, lot sizes would just be minimums, so somebody's got a large piece of land and they want to cut it into ten each.
Yeah.
Regardless of what the county says, they can.
Oh yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, if you want to preserve that area, you you got to do something. But. I understand you got to have somewhere to start, somewhere to start. You know. And uh. That's my only concern.
Are you done now?
I'm done now. I think Elfronville Village is too big. All the way to Claude Simpson, all the way out to Steel Road, Elfronville Village, turn, hey, it's not that big. Uh, and that little orange section right there. It's Hershey property and church property. Got all that throughout the land, that will be blue then.
You mean like right there?
Right there at Ospey.
Ospey.
You got that little, little orange dotted there, and I mean, it looks like Charles Hershey's property and Church's property. And Church has still got a house on it. Right there across from where you turn in to go to the middle school.
So again, it's not necessarily, you know, Brian knows more about that specific area than I do, but it's not, it's not necessarily what it is today, it's what. You might want it to be in the future.
But I don't understand why you just want those two properties. As rural community when the rest of suburban transition, when it, to me, it should all be the blue. Not have the little orange section.
Mr. Bear, do you think Ospey will ever be interested in, it's that they came and said, we want to be annexed?
To Ospey?
Yeah.
No, we ain't gonna be annexed.
No, no, if they came to Ospey and said.
Oh, they may, I don't know.
Want to be annexed, y'all be.
Oh yeah, we take them in, most of that is. We got a, we got the left side, we're coming going north, we got the right side eighty-seven and. This is a little, but. That, Charles Hershey, when they. Incorporated Ospey. Was about the whole time that they was having all that hog farm issues out there.
Uh huh.
Town of Ospey didn't want hog farm issues, so they went around. Charles Hershey's property.
I had the point there, I don't know that I have a memory of why that's orange instead of blue.
Okay, 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 I mean, this, this, his meat, his meat processing plant is on, in that orange. And there's a little, whatever, that used to be on forty uh eighty-six that made saddle dress into cauldron or whatever. I think is in there now. And then the church has bought all that property right across. From Amy's property. And it's just half. And it looks like that's the properties that that is. Cause it looks like it's right across the street from. North Chris subdivision.
I just, I don't know that area, and maybe I'm dumb, the white that's around the blues, what is, what is that?
Where you talking about?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Ospey's. Just, it is, okay, so that's, that's, that's.
That is, the, the small angular parcel is actually in the, in the town of Elon.
Okay.
And then the little sliver that snakes on the east side is the river.
Okay, that's where I'm, that's.
Yeah, this right here is the town of Elon.
Okay, and the big, the big.
Right across from Garrett.
The orange there, that's.
This one, yeah.
And that's where West. Yeah.
Right there, boy, this.
Elon had annexed that piece of property, but has not put an E T J around it.
Right, right, yeah.
They own that property, it's a satellite, and they annexed it, cause.
They own it.
They own, yeah, the town, and it's in the town length. I mean, they, it's, and then if you go down eighty-seven, the bottom of the hill at Robin Hood Drive. Somebody donated a bunch of land where that. Pipeline or something comes in, and it's in the town. What says right here, this one?
That one, the town of Elon.
Okay, that's Elon, and this is Ospey.
And that's Ospey.
Okay.
Four oh six, that's some of those posts say.
What's this, Ospey, all this is Ospey. Okay.
Yeah, new person on the news.
I have Google Ospey enough to know that there is an Ospey adventure.
Her property is right there. You know where y'all, her property is right there. That's back. That one goes around behind and goes around, comes back.
Yeah, 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 her white house is right there.
Right.
That's all, I see. Back to Rodney.
Okay.
Now, what you get?
So everybody's talked about the map.
Who's it for you?
Well, I don't have anything to add.
So I'm thinking we can try to find some time to dial in these changes and then bring back in a bit the draft. Maybe next week? Maybe sometime after this.
Where are you getting done, brother?
We're looking back here.
Might need to rope.
But I guess, I got a question.
Hurry, but.
Did you get a little more of ours before you changed and then come back?
Yeah, absolutely, so we're not necessarily in a hurry, I mean, I don't think we want to take all year long, but um, I would say I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth either, but I think the commissioners want us to. Do a rather deliberative process and send them something that is quality product. And I think if that takes a few months, then.
Speaking of that issue. Two years ago, all of you guys and us almost hung in the courthouse. What's changed, if anything?
The pressure.
Sorry.
The pressure. Of growth.
The pressure of growth.
See, you heard Royal Forest, that's a pretty soon.
So the, the hanging issue. Come from Snow Camp. When the thought was to look into.
Zone in this spot.
Yeah, z- uh zoning an area as opposed to the whole county.
Why are you doing it to me and not doing it to them?
Or why are you protecting them and not me?
Well, I use your term hanging recently.
Well, we all understood what it meant. We were there.
Well, we all understood what it meant, we were there.
Most of us was in that old courthouse.
Correct, yeah. So. It was made clear that if we was gonna do something, it needed to be for Alamance County. Not Snow Camp, not Eli Whitney, not Sykes Bahal, not Pleasant Grove, not Osippee. Or Alton Hall, or wherever. So then the conversation kinda turned, and there was a lot of talk back and forth. And now, the, the conversation, this is where we are. So to, to say that this is being done hurriedly would be a joke. But hopefully. This is significantly different plan than the one that was on the table at that board. Okay, because that was just snow jam, but it was.
Well, that one told you how many trees and what had, and north side of the house, or the east side, and.
This is about as bare bones as you can get for a land use regulation.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so the, the consensus of the community was with the Snow Camp plan. That somebody hired somebody from not around here. Who didn't understand around here, and they sat down to a computer and done a big cut and paste job. And took some stuff from Cary, and maybe some stuff from Chapel Hill, and maybe some stuff from New York City, and maybe some stuff from Chicago.
Not New York City.
And maybe some stuff from Los Angeles, and put it all together and said, well, this is what you're gonna do in Alamance County. And when people sat down and started reading the words on the paper, then's when they rose up and said, oh no, ain't doing this. And that's when the rope come out, and we just escaped the hanging by that much. Loosely or knottly, so, so that's. We've understood for some time that something needed to be done. And that was the first thing that was looked at. The, the plan that didn't go anywhere was the second thing that was looked at, this is what we're looking at now. So hopefully, it can be ironed out and get the wrinkles out of it.
And you got an entirely different board now than you had then, not to help out your board, helping out our board.
This is correct, and the community's changing on a fairly regular basis also.
Well, I think the night that, that I came, when I first applied to get on here, there was a fairly good sized amount of people, and I don't know that you would remember, but there were several people that came in here to talk about the slaughter place across from the Honda plant, um.
Proposed.
Proposed.
Yep.
And they were very shocked to learn that their opinions didn't matter, because if it there was no zoning, and they could do that on their land, and they didn't have anything to say about it. So I think that there are some people who are now understanding that we need growth, we need affordable housing, we need a lot of things, but we have to find a way to do it in a, a good way.
We need plant, we need plant, we need plant growth.
Yes.
I, I do remember that meeting, I was there. And I also remember that that same group of people at that same meeting were shocked to find out that no permit had been applied for.
Right.
So the county had no official position on this slaughter proposed facility, because nothing had been turned in. So.
And it didn't have to come to the planning board.
And say things were wrong, boy.
That was signed off in-house. I'm not gonna call his name, but he was a commissioner sometime back, and he called me up one day and said, what are y'all doing? And I left some words out. And I said to him, what are you talking about? And I left some words out. And he said, we got our rear ends handed to us last night on a plate because of. And I said, first I've heard it, and he's like, you know, about this, I said, hadn't heard a word. And it's because when the person or people put the application in, they checked off all the boxes. So, so the question has been asked in this very room since then. Can we, Alamance County, put a rule in place? Where if somebody comes in and says, I wanna do X, we can say, no. And the answer to that question is, no. We cannot do that. So. The, the alternative is to be bulldozed over by people from way off. They come here, they buy land, they do something with it. They cash out, they take their money, they go back home. Then Alamance County has to deal with the fallout. If it's a mega subdivision, we got to be responsible for the roads, the schools, emergency services. All of the stuff that the county has to provide, we have to take care of. If it's a manufacturing facility that has a caustic toxic byproduct. They do what they do, and beyond what the state mandates, we have to deal with. So, so the thought is, we need to get a hold on what's going on. So that we don't get run over, steamrolled as it were, in the process. With this site, with the Wolf Speed, with the Vinfast, with all of the stuff that's going on. And right now, the property tax here are still appealing. There are people that come here and they pay their property tax in January because they realize they're paying eight cents on the dollar from where they come from. And now they're living on an acre, so they believe that they've moved to the Ponderosa. Cause where they used to live was fourteen floors up, and it had a thousand square feet. So, so this is, this is where we are, and this is what has inspired this work. I'm done. Any other comments or questions or anything else on the map, and, um, if you think of anything between now and the next meeting, preferably sooner. You know, call me, email me, and be working on it.
But even when we, as a group, come together with this map and then send it to the county commissioner. It's still an appeal process to anybody that owns property, like Henry was saying down here on Southern part of county. They can still come in and appeal to be changed to.
Yes, yeah, so if this map were the law, the local ordinance. If somebody says, I'm in the agricultural district, I don't think I should be, I wanna be reclassified into rural residential. They would request that change, go before the planning board, planning board makes a review and recommendation, and ultimately it's decided by the county commissioner.
Let's say it was a big farmer that wanted this, I, I think I may want to sell my farm. But I want it changed to, so it'd be more, they could come and appeal and have that done.
Yeah, they could, um, typically those types of changes happen when there's a pending development, there's more of a compelling case as to why the change is necessary, uh, but yes, I completely agree. And that's really, I think you're on your point. Best part about this process for me, there's a lot of green on here, a lot of agriculture, because that's what there is there right now. It's not gonna stay up there forever.
Right.
It's just, you're never gonna. I mean.
And even, even the, even the ones in the blues, this agriculture, they can stay that way.
Yeah, I think we know over time that the current number of agriculture acres are gonna shrink. But this gives us the ability to say no.
Okay.
If it's in the wrong place, if it's the wrong thing, this is the chance that the county will have to say no to the next slaughterhouse or whatever.
So to kinda go back, so just the process of change, so it would come to the planning board for recommendations, say we look at and we say, no. Does it end it, or does it then still go to county commissioners?
Your, your recommendation of, no, we don't think this should be changed, goes to the county commissioners, but they have the ultimate say.
Okay, so that's, that's just a recommendation to them would be.
So it's the exact same process, remember a few months ago, we had talked about a change to the U D O to allow the environmental health certificate on subdivision plants? Okay, you made a, you, as a board, made a recommendation to adopt that change, and then you, uh, attached this, a statement with then I said that it was consistent with the adopted twenty twenty land use plan. It would be the exact same process, or a, uh, uh, amendment to this map, or any other text to the U D O. Exact, exact same process.
Those rules and guidelines is what we've got to get set. And that, there'll be a whole group of rules and guidelines set to go along with.
Well, the rules and guidelines are there, they don't change, they're set by the state of North Carolina, the, the particularities of what we adopt on the county level is what we can control. The overall process is pretty much set.
Is it comment for county commissioners to have that final say in, in individual developments like that in, in surrounding?
Yes, that's increasingly very, very common, and most jurisdictions use, uh, something that's someone's conditional rezoning, and they have really granular ability to say yes or no.
Okay.
What about, well, if it is turned, would that not go first to the, the board of adjustments?
No, because you're simply making a recommendation.
Okay.
You're not making an administrative decision or any other kind of final decision.
Okay.
You doing?
Yeah.
The complete answer to your question is. This board makes a recommendation, county commissioner either approve it or not.
Okay.
If they don't, the next sitting is appealed to Superior Court. And if they lose in Superior Court, then they just keep appealing it upstream. Which is the reason, the original question was answered, can you say no? Because when the right guy comes in with the right amount of money, who can drag this out in court through perpetuity and still have money left over. It's like playing poker, if you bet enough money, even if you got five different colored cards in your hand, if you bet enough, you still win. Cause you break everybody else, and they fold, and you don't even have to show yours. You know, and you didn't win, but they won.
Okay.
And that's, that's where we're going with this. Is what I said wrong?
I was actually looking up whether or not it's appealed to the Superior Court.
It's appealed, it's appealed to the courts, so I would think it would go just like you announced, but there are uh, limitations on when you can file an appeal for different types of zoning decisions, and the key is, is to make, when the commissioners make their final decision, that they're not being arbitrary and capricious, they're basing their, their decision to change that zoning district, um, or that land use district, if we're trying to stay away from that word, um. To, to make sure they're basing out goods, it is based on our plan, the goals in our plan. And that's part of the planning board's job is to help give them that information, because the planning board works with that plan the most.
Forgive my ignorance on this, but this is a good time to ask this question, what is a board of adjustments, how do they come into this, and, and why don't they come into this? It sounds like it goes around them, what would, what, what would their, what's, what's their, what's their position, I guess, in the decisions that they, that they make?
So they hear quasi judicial cases, like if we, if, if, uh, we have administrative approval or denial uh, over a permit, and the developer doesn't agree with our denial, they would appeal that to the board of adjustment. Or if these plans are adopted, and there is a particular hardship on a property that makes it very hard to comply with these plans, then they would
Be adjusting.
They would request the variance.
Okay, I see, thank you, okay.
The board of adjustment used to go to the county commissioners, and we got smart.
Had a very wise tool.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Now terms. New business, uh, new business. So I don't really have much on this, other than my attention was that the, the process for the taking of the mixes was basic to be, just like we did with the map. Um, if you guys want to take a look at some things now and ask questions, you can get the process going when you can. But I think importantly, probably we'll be good then, just like we did with the map, take it home, have some homework, score over it. Make sure that it's clear to you, and then we can really dig in more detail in the next meeting. Um, I will just say, so if you look at the top of what was in your agenda packets, you've got the districts. Summarize there, and then you've got the following, um, oh my, descriptions of each category. P is permitted by rights, in other words, they are, they can just go and, and obviously just do that, or an approval that they can, they can do it. P A would be permitted with additional regulations. S U would be, would require a special use permit, then X means it would not be permitted in that district. Um, obviously, this is still a draft, well, even Brian and I sat down on Wednesday and probably tell that ten, ten changes from, um, what was in your agenda package, so feel free, just like the map, mark it up, make some notes, formulate some questions, and and we can get back into it, uh, at the next one, certainly free to ask questions now. That's kinda what I had in mind for the process.
So the typical usage you have there, so five, six, two, mark that up if we see.
Yeah.
Okay, got you, for the next thing.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
And it's gonna correspond with the districts on the map, these, these.
And these additional regulations, Article Six, Part Nine, that's referring back to the, to the U D O, or is, what is that?
No, no, I'd say most of it, or maybe at least half of it, is what already exists, where do you see Article Six, Part, whatever, that's existing. Uh, or some kind of an existing portion of the U D O. A lot of what we have in mind is, uh, you'll see Section five point five, for example, in the draft of the Wilderness Code on the form-based code regulations for Saxton, in particular, for example. Um, some things dealing with like pedestrian crossings, or, or like, so like the, uh, transportation issues, landscape blockers, for example, so those are either part of the draft ordinance, which will come up soon. Or they're gonna have to be kind of fleshed out details.
The one at the end, nine five, it's on all the last ten, that's high effect.
That's the existing, yeah.
Yeah, existing high effect is over the ones.
I got another quick question.
Yeah.
If, and it's going along with what you got here, it says adult care homes and nursing facilities, X not allowed in A G.
You know, that's what I was gonna ask, what's the difference between?
Well, ain't there some in Pleasant Grove on Petilla Church Road, and this in A G?
Are they adult care, or they family group, or they retirement, what's, what's the difference? I was just sitting here trying to Google the, the general statute, and see if it defines that.
Did you say a group home versus a retirement home?
Versus an adult care home, a nursing home, I, I'm assuming a nursing home requires a C O N? Is that what our definition is?
I was gonna say, that would be, I, I know this is gonna be difficult to, to do, but having a definition of some of these, you know. I, I think I know what, um, the urban agriculture is, but what do we mean by that?
Sure.
Uh, or that's just a, an example, but yeah, what, what, what do we mean by an adult care home, nursing home, I think I know what that is, but.
Well, you're like, Blakey Hall is both, right, I mean, that's in Elon, but I mean.
That, that is a, a it's just a living facility that has a C O N with it, that also has a C O N for the memory care, that has
Right.
Retirement apartments around.
Around it.
That are not C O N.
Right.
So what is that?
So that would be adult care.
And to make some question, I think adding some definitions is, you know, it's gonna be a bit of work.
And there's fake definitions too, probably.
Right, like for example, family group home, if you see out to the side, it says, North Carolina general statute, one sixty.
And I read that, that's like, a home with support, supervisory personnel that provide rain board, personal carry, yada, yada. In a family environment for not more than six residents, so that might be like Ralph Scott's, got individual houses throughout the county that offers live-in support for.
Right, and that, as far as I understand it, if you, if a local jurisdiction adopts this type of a map, you have to allow, allow that wherever you allow residential. And so that's why you see a broad permitted use across the board.
So a family group home would be like Ralph Scott Services houses that offer for people with disabilities and by statute is what it looks like.
Yeah, that, that in particular is governed by that statute.
So then there's the adult care homes on Petilla Church Road, or they are they nursing homes?
Oh, what the, adult care is what you say on the signs.
My, my assumption is it'd be a larger facility than just the, the, what was it, six or seven allowed in a family group home, but I think to Tom's point that.
Well, out there on Petilla is probably that six or seven.
It's ten, there's some out there that, that, what was.
Some are called group homes, and they're more, more than six, but less than a certain number.
Well, there's some out there that, that have twenty.
A lot more, so yeah, that would be, uh, so the important thing is just gonna be refine those, add definitions. And that, you, you bring up something.
And that, you, you bring up something that's a really good point too. If you see anything that's absent in the table that you think needs to be added, then, um.
Look, it looks like a racetrack is in Mill Village, Ralph Mahoff.
Currently it is.
Yeah, it's currently in the Mill Village.
There's a racetrack in the Mill Village at Saxto Hall to go over at the right time of day.
Kyle and you speak.
That's right. So last month, there was some talk about making a list of non permitted uses. I think I remember that.
So basically that's what, if you see an X on the table.
Yeah.
That's what that.
That's where that.
Not permitted in that district.
There's a majority of land that is not knocked out.
It's grandfathered.
It's grandfathered.
If it's on here, it becomes a legal non fulfillment.
Yeah, the, it, the premise of this whole thing would be moving forward from the date after the commissioners adopted and sign off on.
What did they change? I don't know. That was, yeah.
The development runs of the land and that's, that's very typical and, um.
So if they use it for the same use, when they buy the business and the land, they can continue it. But if they change the use of it, then they would have to.
Typically, the, the new regulations take effect for a change of use or abandonment. So like if you abandoned the use or the property for a period of one hundred eighty, three hundred sixty, whatever days. Then when you come back into use, you have to come into compliance. So then if you'll remember, and we, we talked about this and I've had a few conversations, and you and I talked about this as well, Mac, if you came by. So, um, one of my critiques with the current U D O is that the nonconforming provisions to me aren't strong enough. You know, those are very important in my opinion in protecting existing landowners, even if the rules change. You know, you've got folks up there that are living on properties that were subdivided in nineteen fifties or sixties or wherever. And obviously the subdivision regulations have changed since then. Well, they should be able to build a house there by right. You know, you, you need to have good, sound, nonconforming regulations to protect property owners for when the local regulations change. And to me, that's a big part of this.
Yeah, oh, what's the difference in part, I think I know, but park and ride terminal versus a transit station?
That's right.
Yeah, same question.
We had a big conversation about park and ride. I mean, we're reporting the ground, that's a park and ride. I, I get that. And I know the bus comes out to Saxto Hall, they just stop wherever. I think a transit facility would be a bus station, which wouldn't be appropriate in a rural county. Park and ride, I think probably would be. So that's something we talked about loosening up where that could go because you'd want that. In a west. I mean, if we're gonna let all these people come in from the other place. They, they may want a park and ride there. You know what I'm saying?
But park and ride would be considered park and ride of public transit bus or some sort.
Could be a carpool lot. It could be, normally we'd sit on a bus there, but.
Okay, all right.
It's just where you can meet, you can meet and, and join whichever way, whether it be a.
This right here is a textbook example of how a community can potentially work together. Cause usually when you get out in the country, what are we talking about? There's a church on every corner.
That's right.
And most churches got parking lots. And during the week, Monday through Friday, during the day. They're not being used a lot.
Right.
So if you're gonna make a monetary contribution for something, if you're gonna pay to park in a municipal lot, pay to park in the church lot, money goes to the church. Or whatever they do with it, be that's good or bad or right or wrong. Sometimes that don't work out, but sometimes it can.
Yeah, buddy, and I, we talked about this one thing. And I don't know if it's a legal constitutional or if it's allowed, but is there, or can we make a distinction between a local family or a mom and pop business versus a, say a commercial franchise? And can we, can this be tailored to be, uh, promote family, local businesses and keep out the franchise McDonald's or whatever, all that, the stuff we don't want. And you know, you're just discriminating for local small businesses. But allowing it. And I don't know if that's even possible.
Yeah, so technically.
Was that clear? Did, I mean, did y'all understand what I was trying to get at?
What you saying is we'd rather go to Miss Nellie's for lunch than we would go to McDonald's.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah, we just have similar to that in heaven with the specific McDonald's down near State Line.
Yeah, we can't really do that. It's a.
Right.
Good idea.
Oh. But I think we can keep those such things in mind as we're working on this. So we did talk about the non conformities as well.
Yeah.
You know, I've only ever worked in rural counties where you've got a guy doing mechanic work on, on his property. You've got somebody doing small engine repair. You've got a hair salon in a mobile home kind of a thing, you know, those types of home based businesses. So, um, to me, that's another good example of why the nonconforming protections need to be very thoughtful and very sound. But I also, you know, that was really part of my process, my, part of my thought process in crafting the rural communities and explicitly making them more of a mixed use community. So you may have a house next to a nail salon, next to an auto body garage. And ideally it's all local folks that are, that are kind of running their businesses there. So at least the, the land use regulatory landscape is flexible enough to accommodate those types of folks, i- ideally where they already are. And the, you know, Saxto Hall is one of the areas we were thinking a lot about when we made the Mill Village districts, which is the rural community district, but it's the only place in the whole ordinance where there is a aesthetics component. Right? So for the most part, we're not telling you what anything looks like, how many trees you gotta have, whatever. Mill Village is the exception. So we can't tell the Bojangles they can't come there, but we're gonna have some say over what the Bojangles looks like and how it fits into the village. So they get better, but it makes it a little, you know, a little more palatable. Yeah.
Mac, be careful what you ask. There are three lawyers in the room.
Got one.
Be careful, I'm winning now.
But that's all I got on the, um, table of uses and like I said, take it home, tear it apart, come on back and we'll talk about it next time.
What have you got for announcements?
None.
Sure.
It's late and it's finally not raining.
Motion with.
I have, I have one question for you, Matt, that you know that we've talked about.
The lot size stuff.
Yeah, and when, at what, at what point will we get to telling what's gonna take place in the green and the blue and the dark blue, you know?
So that's gonna be part of the actual land use development ordinance. What's gonna go along with it? The table of uses is just a snippet of the larger ordinance, which at this point is a draft of, I think about sections eight to the ages. So that'll be part of it. It's gonna have to go hand in hand with the revisions to the subdivision ordinance. So my thoughts on what the final package is gonna look like is you're gonna have a map. You're gonna have a corresponding land use ordinance. And a lot of what is in here is gonna interplay with the changes to the subdivision and including the lot sizes.
How long do we gonna have it? I would think.
Weekend night. Think they're ready, we can do it next, next meeting.
Ain't seen it. Well, I don't know.
Before you adjourn, I'd like to say, Mr. King and Mr. Jordan, thank you, uh, new members. Uh, and I voted for both of you, by the way. Uh, just appreciate your expertise, your behavior and willingness and the entire board. Appreciate your willingness and time that you devote in the meeting. Thank you.
And Mr. Chandler also is new to this board. He moved up from the alternate spot on the other board. He's hiding over in the corner.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate you.
All right. So was, did you second the motion to adjourn?
I'm second.
Oh, oh, gee, okay, excuse me. I keep hearing all everything on this side. So an emotion and a second, all in favor, huh?
Nah, nah.
Okay. See you next time.
Yeah, we ain't got no announcement.
Well, if we do, we're saving next time.